Madam Clerk?
Our next item is TR 18-37, Resolution to Approve the Comprehensive Agreement Between Gilbain Building Company and the Falls Church City School Board for Design and Construction of the New George Mason High School.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Kristin Michael, the Chief Operating Officer for the school system. Good evening, Mayor Charter, Vice Mayor Conley, and City Council. On behalf of the Superintendent of the Schools and our school board and our Chair here with us this evening, thank you for your consideration tonight to approve the comprehensive agreement between Gilbain Building Company and the school board for the design and construction of the new George Mason High School. All of us truly value and appreciate the continued support that we've received from the city council, including your participation in the selection process of the design builder for the high school and attending the presentation that they gave to the school board just last week. With me here this evening, I have Trish Minson, who's our legal counsel. She'll go over the contract with you this evening. We also have Jennifer Marks, our principal in charge from Gilbain Builders. She's going to present a video that shows the construction overview. And then also with us this evening, we have Daisy Bregman from our owner's representative, Brailsford &amp; Dunleavy. Throughout this confidential procurement, we've done a lot of outreach to the community with respect to the process. We've held community meetings about the design elements. We've held Sunday Series jointly with our city manager. We've held board meetings, and we've also done various outreach, including Twitter and our social media sites. I would like to take just a minute tonight to explain the process for the public of how we've gotten to where we are tonight. The conversation about our new high school has been ongoing for about a decade, and we're now on the precipice of being able to start building that new high school. We'd like to thank the community for passing $120 million bond that put us in the position where we are today. Our community is ready for this project, and we're set to deliver on their collective hopes and wishes. After the referendum, we put out our RFCP, our Request for a Comprehensive Proposal, on November 30th, 2017, and those responses were due on January 17th, 2018. That was essentially our qualifications phase. During that phase, teams were asked to submit their proposals, and those indicated their collective readiness and the ability to meet our specifications. We received five excellent proposals, and we down-selected to three finalists on February 20th, 2018. We'd like to thank the committee that helped us get to that. Included were city council member, Mr. Zee, city manager, Mr. Shields, school board member, Ms. Erin Gill, school board member, Mr. Justin Costello, our planning commission chair, Mr. Russ Wadiska, our legal counsel, Trish Minson, and our superintendent, Dr. Peter Noonan. On February 22nd, 2018, we launched the RFDP, the Request for Detail Proposals for the three finalists. Those finalists were given a couple of months to put together a conceptual design that would best meet our needs as defined in our educational specifications, the information from our community outreach sessions, and the 10 years of notes and comments and information that we included in that proposal request. On May 17th, 2018, we received the three finalist submissions, and on June 29th, 2018, we met as a team to review those finalists and down-select those three to two. The committee that we would like to thank for the work on that included city council member, Mr. Ross Lichtenhouse, city manager, Mr. Wyatt Shields, planning commission member, Mr. Tim Stevens, who's here this evening, school board member, Ms. Shawna Russell, our principal, Mr. Matt Hills, Trish Minson, again, our legal counsel, Lisa Hi, our chief academic officer, and Dr. Peter Noonan, our superintendent. On July 29th, that RFDP committee interviewed the two finalists, and after deliberations came to unanimous consensus that Gilbain-Stantec Quinn Evans team was the team to build our new high school. Throughout that 10-year conversation, we've heard the community, and the design, budget, and schedule from Gilbain reflects our educational specifications and those values that the committee have. Their design is agreeable to the 10-acre site. It moves all of the athletic fields behind the school and relocates the loading dock. The facility would be net zero and lead gold with comfort. It has great instructional spaces. They're flexible and built with a future in mind. It has regionally excellent athletic and arts facilities, and it has great ways for us to segment the public so we can ensure that we have great community use of our facility. And lastly, safety and security were of paramount design influence. In terms of the budget, this proposal did meet our all-in budget of $120 million, and that total includes bond costs, architecture, engineering, site and construction, as well as post-construction. Their contract that we have before you tonight meets the design criteria of $108 million in total for the construction cost limit. Lastly, the schedule. The Gilbain's proposal has an acceleration to it that none of our other proposals did. That current plan would allow us to potentially take control of the site in the December to January, 2020 to 2021 timeframe. That could mean that we could facilitate an early move to the new school, and it would also allow us then to free up the space for the economic development site earlier. In conclusion, the comprehensive agreement that we have before you tonight reflects the collective input from our school board, the city council, school and city staff, and our community. We're very excited to move again, move forward, and we thank you for your ongoing support, collaboration, and partnership. I'm now going to turn it over to Jennifer Marks, who's going to present the video, and then lastly, we'll have Trish Minson look at the contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Marks.
Good evening. I'm the project executive from Gilbain. I'll be overseeing the design and construction process along with our team. So, we went through this video last week at the school board meeting. This was a key part of our presentation. The work that you're going to see here is built directly from the model that we've already started from our design, so you're seeing the actual design work that we've already started that we'll continue to build on through the process. So, I'll try to walk you through this. The first part of the video is just going to kind of orient you to the site, existing conditions. What you'll see when we get into some of the builds, we are maintaining the existing football field and baseball field. So, part of our approach was they were in the correct locations and was not really a great use of funds to look at relocating them. So, we tried to work with those as we tried to create this contiguous sports zone. Fence should pop up here shortly. So, this is the summer, if you want to pause right here for a second. This is the summer of 2019. So, after school is out next summer, as soon as everyone's vacated from the campus, we'll put up our construction fence. And really, the goal of that summer is to complete the major excavation activities that are necessary. We very focused on during the summer months trying to complete activities that'll be safe for when students aren't on the school campus. So, we have a lot of truck activity that we'll be coordinating during this timeframe. If you continue with the video, you'll see the school is designed with a sub-basement. So, that's the first focus of our construction, is creating that sub-basement and then working our way through the site to create the foundations. This building is structural steel. We are building directly adjacent to Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, so what you'll see is that steel start coming up right next to the building. It was mentioned, one of the things that we proposed with our design is relocating the loading dock for the middle school. We were very sensitive to the fact that that front door of the school is now looks very much like a back door. And so, relocating that loading dock, really creating a much better, good neighbor zone with the commercial development to create, you know, a much more successful opportunity for both parties on that part of the site. Once school is back, really, that's when the activities are coming on. This is the springtime of 2020 at this point, when the building is getting enclosed. And then, the focus on the following summer is the redoing of the site work along where the existing buck drive is. So, if you pause here for a moment, will be part of the RFP requirement was to continue to maintain 20 school buses on the campus as well as 300 parking spaces. So, we've created a better bus loop for circulation. Right now, it's really clunky for the buses to turn around and be able to accommodate that on campus. So, we've put in a bus turnaround at the end and better parking. And then, over the summer months, what we're also doing is creating that new loading dock function so that when the high school, when it's done at the end of the year, that function's in place. So then, continuing through the fall, at this point, we're really inside the building. So, the video doesn't look like a lot's going inside the building because we've already, the goal is to have it enclosed by the summer of 2020, which allows us to finish all the work on the inside of the building. At this point, we're, if you pause here, this is basically the transition time between December 2020 and January 2021. So, we'll be done with the school construction, and we'll work closely with the school to figure out if that transition makes sense over the winter months, you know, the, any relocation of equipment that needs to come out of the existing school, as well as a significant amount of new furnishings and things that are needed for the new school. At that point, we basically have a six to eight-week period where everything rests. We make sure all the circulation's working good on the campus, and then get ready for the demolition of the existing high school. One of the reasons that we wanted to propose this earlier schedule is the way that our site is designed, if you want to click, it'll go forward. The, what you'll see when the fence goes around the existing campus to be demolished, is we have a significant portion of site work that is under the footprint of the existing building. So, what we really wanted to do was be in a position that the demolition was completed far enough along that that last summer of 2021, that we were able to complete all that new site work. So, you'll see when it pulls back where that, where that fence line is around the, it'll show better in a second here. So, if you pause right here, so that's that new plaza area, and we've been having a lot of conversations about how do we create that really nice, good neighbor zone between the school and the future development. And we thought it was really important to relocate that field. The, all the feedback we got from the development portion, we had several development consultants on our team, and they felt very strongly that a playfield with its lights and noise was just not something that was very friendly to either residential or commercial development. So, what that allowed us to do then is create this nice zone for parking. And I know there's been some conversations about what the development teams might now propose in terms of parking. Several of them had proposed potentially an underground parking zone, which is much more easily facilitated with that field no longer being located there. So, at this point, you know, that's when the future development takes place, and then what else, the video will spin around again and show you what that new athletic zone looks like. So, we're creating a new six-court tennis court, a new multipurpose field, as well as a new softball field that's oriented in the proper direction. And then, we've also paid, we really wanted to create a nice sports experience in that zone. So, you'll see that there's a sidewalk zone that kind of bisects throughout, and that helps not only facilitate ticketed events if that facility is used for more regional or school events, but also just creates a nice way to create connections between the different fields. So, it's a lot slower. I normally talk really fast, and this just gives you an idea of what the building looks like as we transition. We had mentioned in the presentation last week, we spent a lot of time looking at what the building looks like during the day, as well as in the evening hours, knowing that this facility is used not only during the school hours, but also is a main community hub for activities as well. I think that's it. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? All right, maybe none at the present, but thank you for that very nice presentation. Oh, we do have some questions. All right, Mr. Duncan? All right, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Even seeing it a second time around, it looks really impressive. So, I appreciate that. I know you put the red, I think, line around where the construction zone was. Does the middle school recess get impacted by that?
It does not. What we'll be doing is creating a fence line that actually stands off from the face of the middle school. We want to make sure there's safe egress out of the middle school during all points of construction. The only thing that's impacted during construction is the basketball courts that are behind because it's kind of right where the new school is going.
Okay. And then, in terms of expansion possibilities, I know that the school should last us a very long time, but in the event that we do need to expand, say, 20 years from now, is it thinking that we would go up or out, and if out, where would we go?
So, we actually studied expansion for both the middle school and the high school and provided drawings of where we would indicate those go, and they're kind of on the backside like as a bump out. So, it wouldn't be going additional vertical.
Okay, so we would not be going more vertical?
Correct.
Okay. And then, lastly, which is more, I think, to do as we continue on, is I think obviously fields are going to be impacted during construction, and so we'll talk about relocating activities and camps and community events like July 4th, which is very popular on the football field and other events. But I assume that's something that the city and the schools will coordinate closely on.
Well, so during construction, we will be maintaining access to the football field and the baseball field throughout the duration. I forgot to point it out in the video, but we're actually creating a temporary pathway that will go from the parking lots to allow people to walk around the side of the football field to access both those fields. The softball field and tennis courts will be offline, but the other two will still be online.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
The, to the fields question, so you call it football field, but the stadium field, it will be used for football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey?
So, the, we are creating a new multi-use field as a part of construction.
And I was going to ask about the multipurpose field.
Yeah, so the new multi-use field is regulation size. It is on an artificial turf, and we'll be providing nets to, I think, accommodate both soccer as well as field hockey. So, we need to work with the school to confirm the exact program, but it's replacing sort of what is the existing grass field that's in the footprint of where the new building is going to go.
There's enough space there for a regulation-sized soccer field?
That was a big part of, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to get that corner to work, and we increased the size of the field to full regulation.
All the, all the anxiety we had for so many years over that, and you guys just looked at it, and, you know, here we are. Shows why we hire experts. That's great. The, I'm sorry, Ms. Hardy mentioned the middle school, the current middle school playground, does it go away, or does it continue after you're done?
It's one of the topics we need to talk about. There isn't a great way for it to continue exactly as it is. We have a couple options that we'll review and offer suggestions for.
Okay. And the, you mentioned the multipurpose field would be an artificial turf field. The football field, of course, stays, the stadium field stays the same. Is the softball field anticipated to be natural turf or artificial?
It is. Natural.
That's natural. There'd been some discussion about the outfield of the baseball field eventually maybe being made artificial so that it too could serve, you know, dual purpose as a practice space when baseball wasn't using it. Is that, that's not in the plan, but is that conceivable?
It is not in the plan. It is conceivable. That would be a great topic for us to discuss because depending on the extent of the geothermal wells that we're putting in, that we will potentially be going into the outfield of the baseball. And then, right now, what we've accommodated is if we're going into the outfield, then we're replacing the natural grass when we're done with our work.
And there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, need for green space and a more park-like atmosphere at some point, at some place on this property. This seems like a nice athletic complex. Seems like a nice start onto that. Of course, it's not, you know, like a verdant forest or whatever. But is there anything going on down underneath that would prohibit the planting of at least some kind of trees in open spaces between the fields? Is there enough room for that, or is that just not likely?
So, what this drawing doesn't show is we do have extensive plantings and tree zones that are shown in some of the other renderings. They are not between the fields. I think that would create more of a visual obstruction, but the, the, sort of the promenade behind the school has a pretty extensive planting plan, as well as the whole boulevard in front of the school has plantings as well.
Okay, all right. The only other point I would make is just to object to the phrase that we've been talking about this for about a decade. I'm quite sure somebody here, Mr. Snyder, somebody here will tell me that we have been talking about this for at least 15 years. And, you know, this seems like a minor matter, but it's important for, you know, historical record to show and for the community to feel that, you know, we have given this extreme due diligence. I mean, I remember going to a meeting at TJ when my son was there, and we talked about the Duberry Consulting Project, which looked at how to expand the high school. That was not long after we had already expanded the high school, you know, back in the early 90s inadequately. And anyway, that history informs a lot of what we are doing here, why we are building new, why are we, we are building big, because it has taken us, you know, my son's now graduated from graduate school and working in Arlington County. So, you know, it's taken the better part of a generation for this community to, you know, face up to this and to do what's being done. So, I just, you know, let's go back in the history books and see when the first meeting was about, you know, the need for the new high school. Vice Mayor Conley's done some of that research, but it needs to be, I think, out there. Thank you.
Mr. Zee?
Thank you. The, with such a large site, the aspect of stormwater and drainage and retention are very important, and I understand that you've hired a, one of the preeminent experts, Normandy Associates, is that what, is her name?
R. K. N. Hay is our civil engineer on our team.
I don't really remember the name, but I hear they're pretty good. So, we look forward to seeing that articulated and explained to us at some future point in time. My primary concern, though, is with the tariffs that are already in place on steel and aluminum, and we know that goes into not only just the structure, but also machinery and finishes, fenestration, and if we get 100% taxes that gets passed on to us through the tariffs for everything else that comes out of China, do we intend to expect increases in cementitious materials, rock, other kinds of things? What can you tell us with respect to the steps you've taken to all our concerns that there would not be major scope reductions because of these tariffs?
Well, so we very closely monitor it. It's obviously a concern everyone has that's buying materials at this point. What we have included in our proposal is a certain amount of escalation that does not address if there's any significant changes that occur in the tariffs. Given the current political climate, I think no one's aware of whether that is going to change significantly or not. But what we have done right now, our proposal is based on putting together a guaranteed maximum price sometime in the winter, January, February timeframe, and we've included escalation to accommodate for any pricing adjustments that we would anticipate for those key escalated materials prior to that. And then, at that point, once we've locked into pricing, then that removes the escalation concerns because everything would be purchased.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to all. Trish and Kristin, you guys specifically. I know, having the opportunity to serve with you guys in that final evaluation committee was probably one of my proudest contributions as a public servant here and as a father to my three daughters, and you guys put in an extraordinary amount of work. So, regardless of the 15, 20, 40-year history of this project, I was impressed with the work that you guys did, and just a big kudos to the school on all of the contributions from the city and staff and Jim and his group. I mean, it was, it was just an extraordinary amount of work and consideration that went into it. So, I want to thank all of you for your contributions as well. Thank you.
All right, other comments, questions? I've got a question or two. So, with net zero ready, I would imagine you have geothermal. Do you have geothermal?
We do.
Are those going in the fields that are going to remain functional?
They, well, so, no, we actually have planned that they'll go under the footprint of the new tennis court and the new softball field. So, we completely are avoiding going into the fields that we're leaving. The only condition where we wind up going into the baseball field is if the alternate is selected to also provide geothermal for the middle school. So, our base design includes geothermal for the high schools that exist today, and then we basically had three alternates. One for what could become the future capacity of the high school, then the middle school as it exists today, and then the future capacity for the middle school, if that makes sense, because each one of those has a slightly different loading. So, only if the middle school alternate is selected, we'll wind up in the outfield, and then we'll just schedule that work so that it doesn't impact the playing season.
So, you don't need to use, for example, the football field for, because it seems like it's very extensive to get to net zero ready, but...
Right. What we've done is we actually have overlaid the geothermal wells with some of the stormwater management so that we're able to accommodate all of that site work within the same footprint.
Good, good, okay. And the $108 million number we're talking about, does that include a contingency as well?
It does.
Okay. Also, I, you probably know, we've got a grant, the city's got a grant for 15, I think, believe $15.4 million for transportation, walkability and the like. Does the proposal consider or contemplate any work on streetscape, for example, along Route 7, or what's the condition that you anticipate along 7 next to the high school?
So, our proposal doesn't include any work on Route 7. It utilizes the existing curb cut that currently accesses the site. We also do not include any of the improvements along Hickok Road, which was a condition we were given that the road would stay as is. We did closely look at the proposal that was submitted and the grant money because right now, there's some really nice opportunities to create bike connectivity to the bike, the future bike zones that are looking at, and those are all the issues that we'll look at as we start into the design development process.
So, if the city wanted, for example, to do the streetscape up 7, even to the city limit, for example, would your proposal preclude that?
No, it does not.
Okay, so you have enough distance and setback and the like to do our standard streetscape along Route 7 up to the boundary?
Yeah, I mean, if you think about the, what the existing current condition is today, where the curb cut accesses onto the campus and where the parking lots stop, we're not appreciatively changing that. We're maintaining that same distance.
Okay. And the entrance from 7, is that's, that's going to be a right in, right out, as it basically is now?
As it is today, unless, you know, I know part of that study was looking at some changes potentially in signalization, so depending on how that's pursued.
And could your design also accommodate that if there is a signal put there to...
Absolutely. It was one of the things our team, we kind of, we think that there's a lot of merit to looking at putting a signal there. There's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there in the morning and afternoon hours, so...
Yeah, I think, I mean, sort of, we're trying to figure out now, I think, as a whole, how does this fit in with commercial development, La Motta, and all the different other sites. And so, I think some flexibility as to ingress, egress, and roads, probably something good for everyone.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Duncan?
Could I just ask one other question? I'm not sure if it's you or the manager. The great good news that, you know, the school may be able to be occupied six months sooner. The sequencing of, you know, the work and the bonding and the money that we're hoping to get from the private sector to help pay for the school project, does that change any if the work is done sooner? I mean, are the, the three bidders that we've been talking to, they're, they're aware that the schools are planning to work on a faster schedule, which would free up the land for development sooner, but also would mean we would need to get their money sooner than we sort of told them that we would. And also, if the federal, or if the state money for the Hickok and Route 7 improvements is something that we're counting on, is that money going to be able to be available, or is it still sort of operating on the older timetable?
I could speak to the impact on the developers. A, the developers are, we provided them a copy of the Gilbain Plan last Tuesday, which is when it became publicly available. So, they're still digesting it. I think everybody thinks that faster is better. So, the six months is something that is well-received, but they understand also the terms of the contract, which is that that six months early delivery is the target, but there aren't penalties either on the city or on Gilbain for not meeting that target. So, they're aware of that. So, it doesn't have any impact on the developers in terms of their first payment. That's still scheduled for May of 2019. But if they were to take possession of the property six months earlier, then that sort of main payment for the land when they take possession of it would be six months earlier. And so, they're aware of that, but they're kind of working, they're working all of the Gilbain changes through their design process and their thought process right now. So, the grant, this will sync up no problem with the grant money.
Mr. Snyder?
A couple of questions. So, where is the parking going to go?
So, the parking goes in two zones. It goes, it's essentially in the same footprint on the, on the middle school side where the buses park right now, and the, there's basically two main parking lots there. And then, the new parking lot is the, let's say, if you can, yeah, I was thinking if, yeah, there should be, actually, on the, that thumb drive, there's a picture. Would that be easier, maybe? If you open up the PowerPoint file, there should be a site plan in there. That's probably the easiest place to see it. You scroll down in those slides. I think it's near the end. Yeah, that's slide 10. So, you'll see underneath the multipurpose field and tennis courts, there's the bus harking that comes off the lollipop turnaround, and then there's parking in that place as well as underneath the existing middle school. And then, the majority of the remaining parking is in that trapezoidal space that's between the new high school and the commercial development. And that's the zone that's really going to be, I think, a topic of conversation with the commercial development on what they see as the best use of that space now that we've decompressed that from being a sports area.
So, none of the parking is underground for the school?
Not at this time.
So, it's all surface parking?
Certainly an opportunity to look at that, but not in our proposal. It's all surface.
So, I think looking at this, I think you're absolutely right, that space in front of a high school will be critical both for commercial development and community use potentially and school use. So, what I'm hearing is that while you've got that drawn in that way, you recognize that that's going to be an area of significant conversation with the community and other stakeholders. Is that right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then I see that you're making no assumptions whatsoever with regard to the university site or the metro site. Those development projects both are moving forward in, well, the metro site is moving forward and the universities have expressed an interest to participate to Fairfax County. So that's another area where potentially things could change, maybe even dramatically. Instead of having all that surface parking, you have a lot less. You still get the parking needs done. It may go underground, whatever. So how are we going to handle that sort of thing in the future? I appreciate the flexibility, but discussions and conversation also take time, professional time and money. So how is, how is the contract going to handle that sort of issue?
With regard to the contract?
Yeah.
That's not our property or our land, but I know we're working closely with Brailsford and Dunleavy, with Gilbain, with folks from the city and with the schools. So we'll have the conversation, make sure that we don't keep us from doing anything that would work best for the schools and for the city. But it's my understanding that's Fairfax County land, so we want to be part of those conversations. But it's not something that's part of the contract with Gilbain. It's not something that goes into consideration of what they're going to be doing.
Where I'm going to is, the discussions are going to take time. Flexibility is great. I totally support it. But those discussions are going to take time. How is the contract going to handle the cost of those discussions?
What do you mean about the cost of those?
It's not going to be an add-on, is it? I mean, as we move forward, I'm trying to figure out, does a contract cover the fact that there will be potentially significant discussions with the universities and with the commercial development going forward? Does it assume that? Or would that be a, an add-on to the contract price?
I don't think that it would impact the contract. I think members of, of the schools would be part of those conversations. We'd make sure that Gilbain and Brailsford and Dunleavy are part of those conversations. If there's anything that the city manager would need for Gilbain or Brailsford and Dunleavy to participate in, I know that they're making themselves amazingly available to us. I don't think that would be at additional cost, but that's not expressly detailed in the contract. And really, I think that would be more of a discussion for the schools and for the folks from the city as well.
Let me ask the city manager, what's envisioned for how that would happen and how the costs of that discussion would be covered?
Well, we have, we have a schedule. And if we meet our schedule, then it's, I don't think there are any cost implications. If we miss our schedule, that's where there could be very significant cost implications. Meaning specifically, if we are not able to reach, you know, the terms that are to the city's benefit for the economic development piece, then, you know, that's, that's, that's the key to the whole timing.
We'll, we'll get to some of the legal aspects of the contract. I'm, I'm more interested in the cost because there's, again, there are some potentially significant upsides to the future development on the fringe of this, if you will. And I'm just trying to figure out how that process will go forward and how will it involve the builders of the school? Because a lot of what we're seeing there on the edge may change dramatically.
So in terms of the construction of that road, is that...
Potentially the road, potentially the parking, where is it? How much of it? How do we build it? All those kinds of things. We might do mixed, combined parking with the commercial, so.
I mean, the good news is a lot of that work isn't even happening until 2021. When we did the initial planning, we reviewed all of the potential studies that were out there, both the metro plans, the future development, a lot, you know, it's important for us to understand what your future commercial development proposes in terms of circulation on their campus. So what we tried to do was create a very specific road dedicated to the schools that allows for the, a kind of traffic that needs to come in and out for drop off and pickup in the afternoon. But we did try to align that with the potential that that would then be connecting off-campus, whether it's pedestrian or bus transport, or bicycle transport. So I think as that conversation continues to evolve, there certainly is the flexibility for the work that we're planning to do within the colored portion is essentially the part that is within our scope. If some of those things need to adjust to coordinate with adjacent properties, they certainly can. We just don't have any work beyond that colored zone to go on to the Fairfax County property.
So is the, the parking area in front of the high school in your zone?
It is, right now.
So that, that is subject to further discussion?
Absolutely.
And the contract and the guaranteed maximum price would be able to absorb the cost of that discussion in, ended, under the guaranteed maximum price?
I think it would need to be a city conversation about what work would be done by the school team and what work would be done by the development team. So for example, if the development team were to propose doing underground parking because it allows them to increase the density of parking they can provide for their property, it might make sense to actually deduct that work out of our contract and have it wholly performed by the developer. So there's going to be, need to be a lot of conversations about who is actually the right entity to do that work.
Okay. Next question is, you're aware that VDOT is planning a ramp to serve the West Falls Church?
Yes.
And you, that's assumed in your picture and that would not make any changes, is that right?
No. I mean, that, one of the requirements we were told was to not allow any of, any additional curb cuts that would access that road. One of the things that we had looked at was actually an easier way to get the buses out onto that road. And we were specifically told to not consider that, to allow all the circulation to stay on the school campus.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
If I could just ask a follow-up question as to Mr. Snyder's. So in terms of that area, for example, the parking area behind our city attorney's head, the...
It will forever be known as that.
So, for example, our neighbors to the, probably north, let's say Metro UVA may say, we need, we would prefer a road that has greater capacity than maybe what you're showing there, or wider curb-to-curb, or whatever it might be. So when would you need to know the details of what they would like so that you can plan accordingly? We don't want to have a bunch of change orders and say, get the eraser out, let's redo this several times. What's your timeframe in terms of when you'd want to know what any external parameters are?
So the easy answer is this kind of two parts. The first is the first time we draw it, which is the time that we draw it under the contract. That design work will be going on through this fall and winter. So recognizing that may not be the most practical in terms of all the constituents that are involved. So we, right now, could document it the way that it is. And then if changes needed to be made, we're probably not looking and needing those until 2020 in terms of when we would need to draw it and then basically resubmit it for permits. Right now, the plan is that we're doing design documentation through the fall and we're submitting for permits in March of 2019. That's the date. That's real critical for us to maintain starting construction in late June of 19.
But so you're saying now, but I mean, for example, let's say you got input from Womata in three months from now, is that, would that be a change order additive to the contract? Or would it be, no, we're working on it through January, we need to really know by January what everyone else wants to do?
From the site work standpoint, the, the critical issue is when we go in for site plan approval. So site plan approval is basically the first 120 days of the design period. So it's not that we can't make those changes, but if we didn't know that information today, we would be drawing it as it is. And at most, it might be a change order to the design team to do redrawing based on any lead information.
So some of us are having interactions with our neighbors right now. We want to try to get, we've been trying to gather information for some time and hopefully be forthcoming before we have to do a whole lot of change orders. We're just trying to, from you, get some idea about when you need to know those things without having to do additive change orders to the project. Is, I'm not sure I totally got it...
So, I mean, the big part of the community feedback is through October of this fall. After October, we're really in design production and getting focused on getting in for permit submissions, so.
So October is when you'd really like to know what any of our neighbors want to particularly have as relates to, for example, that front area?
Absolutely. And there's a series of community meetings that have already been scheduled. I think the first is August 4th, is that, August 5th? That'll be the first where we'll reengage and start based on using the design that we've provided as a basis to restart those community engagement processes to get feedback on all aspects of the design.
Okay, great. And by the way, our Chair of the School Board, Lawrence Welk, Lawrence Webb is here. I was calling you Lawrence Welk, but...
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for all your great work. Mr. Duncan?
So this is just a fill-in-the-blank quiz. I'm looking on my phone here at the design specs for Wakefield High School in Arlington, which is someplace that, you know, four years ago, Mr. Z and others had us go to tour. And that was the day that I decided that we, we had to have a school like that. So I'm pleased that this one actually looks in some respects like that school. But the design capacity of, of Wakefield when it was built was 1,600 students and 261 onsite parking spaces. So the numbers for Mason are going to be, the design capacity of the new school is how many students?
1,500.
1,500, and you said 300?
300.
Parking spaces, okay. They, of course, are already talking about needing to expand Wakefield High School in Arlington, so, but we won't go into that. The gym seats at Wakefield 2200, do we have a seating capacity for the Mason gym?
I can get back to you on that. I'm not sure of the exact number.
And the auditorium at Wakefield is 500 plus?
The auditorium, we priced our base design, is based on 650 seats, and we provided an ad alternate for an additional 100 seats.
Okay, so substantially bigger. And 100 classrooms at Wakefield, does ours measure out to a number of classrooms?
We totally don't know it that way, do you? I can let you know.
Okay. And that might be an interesting metric to compare. I forgot to ask about bike parking spaces. At Wakefield, they have more than 300 bike parking spaces? Do we have a count for our bikes?
We don't yet. There's a couple of different ways that we can calculate that, but that's really a design discussion that we wanted to have with the school.
Okay. Well, I think the mayor and others probably would agree that we'd like to encourage cycling and walking to the new high school and hope that the economic development area is, you know, designed in such a way to encourage that, make that safe and appealing. So, yeah, I would hope that bicycle spaces would outnumber parking spaces for vehicles, as was the case at Wakefield. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep, I've got a number of questions on the contract, but I'll hold that vote. I got you here, Jim, if I want to ask you. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. First of all, I got you, because this overlaps. Do you guys, going back to this discussion over collaboration with neighbors and the commercial development, have you guys built into your schedule specific ongoing regular meetings with the commercial developer that's selected for the economic development site?
We have. So there's the infrastructure of the campus coordinating committee, I think, is one of the, one of the places that that interaction is scheduled to take place. We'll be supporting the procurement process to answer whatever questions we have with the city as those developer proposals are finalized. But we're ready for whatever conversations or meetings that need to happen with them.
I assume so. I just think it's important for folks to know that you guys have actually built that into your timeline and construction schedule so that it is formalized. The second piece, and this is probably partly for the city manager, you guys have committed to the demolition of the high school, the old, the existing high school. We included the demolition of the high school in the commercial piece. So just a question as to, that obviously, I think, increases the overall value to the city or decreases potential cost and risk to a commercial developer. I assume we've communicated that clearly to the commercial developers that that is no longer included. So inherently, we've gotten a little bit of a boost on the commercial piece because it's being taken on?
Well, it's actually still a requirement of the commercial piece. And the intent is to have a sit-down with Gilbain and the top proposer to go through a whole host of, of all the logistics of the site. But one of the questions will then be, which is the best entity to take down the, the existing building? And that's, will be evaluated based on price, but also convenience.
So that would, to put you on the spot, if we decided that the commercial developer was going to be responsible for the demolition of the high school, you would deduct that from the overall cost estimate?
Correct. Yeah, we've already been asked by Brailsford to identify that cost. So it'll be one of the first things going on our VM log.
Great, okay. So rock, paper, scissors to see who has to pay for it. I get it, yeah.
I think a lot of it's going to be determined as well as what ultimately goes back there as well, from a timing perspective. Either way, we're going to need to work very closely together to complete that.
I personally look forward to the collaboration on that good neighbor zone. I know it had been alluded to the underground parking and, you know, potentially green space on top of that. And I think that that's a fantastic opportunity for the city to see formalized, tangible collaboration between your team as well as the commercial developer and bringing something to life for both sides of the project. So, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, one more tactical question. I think while we're talking about coordination between all the different neighbors, one thing that's been contemplated is a road that kind of bisects the schools and the commercial development with potentially access to metro, both for access for our teachers as well as people in the neighborhood getting there. Right now, it looks like there's maybe one road, and then there's another one that's kind of diagonal, or just kind of slanted.
Yeah.
How important is the geometry of that? And is that something that could be flexed?
Absolutely can be adjusted. I think that ties into all the conversations as we need to understand really what the desires are off what we're considering the school campus property. What we did was we worked with the existing Hickok turn-in and then tried to create a road that was really bus-friendly, allowed for bus queuing and some of the, the student loading and unloading activities that needed to happen separate from the parking activities. So we're just trying to make that a safe zone for that activity. But one of the things we did was change the geometry is actually different than what it looks like today. So it kind of turns in more to accommodate more of that queuing. So lots of opportunities to look at that.
Okay, great. We'll add that to our to-do list of other things we need to discuss. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you so much. We look forward to hearing more from you. And I guess we're on to our next speaker from the school side, Ms. Vincent?
Good evening. Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly and City Council members, thank you for all you've done to help the schools and school board to get to this point. Thank you, Mr. Z, for your participation in the down-select or the initial of the design build. And thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse, for being part of that final team that reviewed and selected Gilbain. We're really excited about working with Gilbain. Also, thank you, Ms. McCosker, for your help and collaboration reviewing the draft comprehensive agreement and proposal language to help strengthen that agreement. As you know, the city council and the school board jointly adopted a PPEA guidelines that require the council to review and approve any PPEA contract entered into between a school and a private entity. And I'm here to give you kind of the high-level review of the comprehensive agreement that has been jointly executed by the school board and Gilbain at this point is waiting for your approval and to answer any questions you might have. So happy to get down in the weeds of the contract as well. The current comprehensive agreement that's before you tonight is based on the draft agreement that was attached to the RFDP back on February 22nd. Mr. Shields sent you a copy of that draft last month. I did want to highlight the changes of that version to where we are today. The main ways that the agreement has changed through negotiations is that, as it attaches exhibits, are the redacted versions of Gilbain's conceptual and detailed proposals. They also had an accelerated schedule with the new school being delivered in December 2020, January 2021 time period. So some of the changes in the agreement relate to that schedule and when, when different things are going to be delivered and when the project timeframe is going to go forward. The accelerated schedule necessitated some changes and some tweaks to the agreement, including the timeline. The first portion of the contract, and the contract itself is 60 pages, the first 40 or so odd pages, in addition to many, many definitions, focused on the architectural and engineering phase. And the second part focuses on the GMP and the construction phase. We do have strong out clauses at paragraphs 12.1 and 12.14 of the agreement. As mentioned by Ms. Michaels, the construction cost limit of 108 million is the outer limit for the GMP. And as part of the negotiations, we did successfully negotiate a decrease in fee as well as some shared savings. We're excited to begin in earnest. I'm happy to kind of get down into the nitty-gritty of the contract. And I anticipate some of you are contract nerds like me and want to get into this. So please share with me your concerns or questions. Happy to answer those.
All right. Let's share some concerns and some comments. Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. I'm just a regular nerd, not a contract nerd.
Okay, well, we'll take you. So on the money side of things, I think we talked earlier
about the six and a half million dollar cap. And I had a sidebar earlier with the city attorney about that. So my understanding is a six and a half million is the cap of what happens if we have to terminate the contract? Because that is what we've bonded so far?
Depending on the timing, yes. If the contract is terminated before June 28th of 2019, then the, the absolute outer limit to the, I'm trying to find the paragraph of, paragraph?
7.1.2.
Thank you. 7.1.2, which is on page...
I love God.
35. It limits to 60, 6.5 million before the next tranche of bond, bond funding if the contract is canceled at any time for us. So the idea is that prior to June 28th, 2019, the absolute amount, max amount that the design face and cost is the 6.5 million.
Yeah. So what I wanted to better understand is what happens afterwards. So if we did have to terminate for various reasons after the next bond tranche is issued, which I think is either 50 or 60 million dollars, so clearly a lot more at stake than the six and a half million, could you talk to us about how much we'd be at fault for? Or how does that work then?
Sure. So looking at 12.4 of the contract, which is on page, 52 of the, the comprehensive agreement, if there's termination for convenience by the owner at any point in the contract, the amount that will be paid under the contract is, the private entity Gilbain will be paid for all the work that's been executed, for the reasonable cost in canceling the subcontract and work orders, and for reasonable demolition costs. So it depends on where we are in the contract if that does happen. And hopefully, we won't get to that. But we want to make sure that Gilbain and their subcontractors are paid for work that's been performed. 12.4 does make clear that the private entity isn't paid any overhead profit or fee on work that's not performed, but make sure they get fairly, fairly paid for the work that has been done for the, the deliverables that have been performed up till that point in time. But then there is no other additional fee or work or profit on the amount that hasn't been performed.
So that would be for actual work and no other, like, penalty, penalty fees for canceling early?
The only other work that's not actual... The only other work that's not actual work would be demobilization costs. So, it does say reasonable demobilization costs, I could see a debate over that in the future, but essentially whatever it would cost them to pick up and move away. So, it wouldn't just be the actual work, but what it would cost them to leave.
Yep, so in light of Mr. Z's comments earlier about, you know, rising construction material costs, I know one thing that's been discussed is pre-ordering a bunch of materials. Would we be subject to essentially that pre-order amount as well?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So, I think earlier discussions said that we would be, or Gilbane was interested in pre-ordering as much as possible to kind of get ahead of the rise in construction costs? So, if we did have to terminate and there was lots of construction materials ordered in advance, earlier than we might have on a regular construction timeline?
Yes.
Would we be subject to paying for those as well?
If they've already been ordered, then we would have to pay for them, and we'd have to figure out how to then sell those, would be how I would see it. We do have built in, and what Jennifer had spoken to, was once the G M P is agreed upon by, through negotiations, which will take place in December, January, February coming up, then that price will be set in, and I do know that the contract was written, and I'm trying to look for the cause now, where if there are additional fees, they could get, have an escalation in cost for those, but once G M P is locked in, then we're good. So, we're moving forward very quickly in that and hoping that, that by getting to all the designs that we can agree upon and getting to G M P it in relatively short order, we can lock in some of the prices and then stave off what could be impacted by tariffs and other changes.
Yeah, in general, it seems like pre-ordering and ordering stuff as early as possible is a good thing, especially if we expect prices to go up.
Until you buy it and then don't go forward.
Yes, that's the risk, because I just don't know, I don't understand enough of how much we'd be ordering in advance, and whether that is very different and more than what a normal construction process would be, and whether that offers a much bigger risk to the city than we would otherwise have.
I know that the cost of whatever we're ordering is going to be below the 6.5 million, so if that assuages any of your concerns, certainly that's the max amount that can be paid out to the private entity and for the design at this point, but you're right, it is a balancing factor to be able to pay for it in advance, but then be stuck with it if we don't go forward, which certainly we all want to go forward, but recognizing that things happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. So, the voters approved the moving forward on this project, but they were advised repeatedly that going forward with the bonds for the construction will depend on a signed agreement for the commercial development. So, just to be clear, what happens if that doesn't happen?
What happens if there's no signed agreement on the commercial development piece? We'll work closely with the city manager and with, Carol, did you want to take that? It sounded like you.
Well, I think that that is why we have the termination for convenience provision. It's designed to limit the damages to 6.5 million, which is the amount of bonds already issued, and if, no matter how much advance order they're ordering, there might be. It's an absolute 6.5 million dollar cap, and so we would know by June how we're doing with our, with the developer, and we would expect our date for the, our comprehensive agreement with the developer is May 28th, so that we would have the comprehensive agreement in place, and we would know that we are getting there and be able to, if there's a problem, we have this cap on damages and the right to terminate for convenience before that time.
Okay, so if we don't get a development agreement, or the cost at this point would be limited to 6.5 million, is that right?
That's correct. If we terminate for convenience, if we...
So, could you read into the record paragraphs 12.1 and 12.4?
Read into the record? I'm sorry, just read aloud?
Yeah.
Sure, paragraph 12.1 is suspension by owner for convenience. At 12.1.1, owner may order private entity in writing to suspend, delay, or interrupt all or any part of the work without cause for its convenience. 12.1.2, adjustments caused by suspension, delay, or interruption shall be made for increases in the G M P, compensation for design face services, private entity's fee or the date of substantial completion, or the date of final completion. No adjustment shall be made if the private entity is or otherwise would have been responsible for the suspension, delay, or interruption of the work, or if any, another provision of this agreement is applied to render an equitable adjustment. And 12.4, I'm actually enjoying this, I always want to be the person at the end of commercials that read like the caveats and clauses. So, 12.4, termination by owner for convenience. If owner terminates this agreement before July 1, 2019, other than a set forth in 12.1.2, what I just read, owner shall pay private entity for all work executed, plus reasonable demolition, demobilization costs, together with the private entity's fee on work completed, but no overhead profit or fee on work not performed. If the owner terminates this agreement, other than set forth in 12.1.2, and owner after July 1, 2019, owner shall pay private entity for all work executed and for reasonable costs in canceling approved subcontract, subcontracts and work orders, and reasonable demolition costs, together with private entity's fee thereon, but no overhead profit on the work, or profit or fee on the work not performed.
So, we've been told that 7.1.2 limits the amount paid under those provisions. Do they refer to 7.1.2?
They do not, that's a separate provision, but it always is applicable and governs the, I mean, govern, the, one has to read the contract as a whole and consider all the provisions.
Okay, so it's your view that we don't need to specifically tie the limits of 7.1.2 into 12.1 or 12.4, that they would be read in?
That's correct, because I think, well, in general, we don't want to start mentioning or cross-referencing too frequently, because all of the provisions do apply, and if you start doing that, you might run the risk that at another time, it wouldn't apply. But I think there's, 7.1.2 has the absolute cap on damages until the next tranche of bonds is issued of 6.5 million.
Thank you. Another question, who are the parties to this contract?
The parties are the school board, as given permission for Peter Noonan, the superintendent to sign, and Gilbane Building Company.
So, if you had a rare circumstance where the school board wanted to move forward, but the city council wouldn't, what happens then?
Well, this, I suppose that the school board could refuse to terminate their contract if we were not moving forward, but they would not have funds to pay for their contract that they had entered into.
I don't, obviously, I don't expect that to happen, but there have been differences between the two bodies in the past, so hopefully it won't happen again. How about termination for cause? How about if we just don't like the job they're doing? What's the provision there?
There is, there's a notice of default where if the private entity under 12.2, we have to give notice to the private entity that we think they're in default, that they haven't provided supply enough of qualified workers, proper materials, or equipment to maintain the approved schedule, or that they have failed to make payments to their workers, their subcontractors, or suppliers, or they've disregarded the laws, or any orders of the public authority having jurisdiction, we give notice to the private entity, written notice, and seven days for them to correct their default. At the point in which they do not correct that, and they fail to promptly commence or continue satisfactory correction, we can take, without prejudice to any other of our rights and remedies, we may take possession of the work site, complete the work utilizing any reasonable means, withhold payment due to the private entity, and as the owner deems necessary, supply workers, materials, equipment, and facilities for the satisfaction and the correct of the default. Once we do that, we can charge the private entity costs and other expenses, including reasonable overhead profit and attorney's fees, and we also require written into any of Gilbane's contracts with its subcontractors, that if we do terminate the contract with Gilbane, the subcontractors would have a contract with us to continue performing work, unless we wanted to designate somebody else to take over. So, if work with Gilbane doesn't, isn't successful, we can still move forward with the project, if that is deemed to be feasible under, under 12.2.2. And we also, if there's an emergency affecting persons of safety or property that's at 12.2.3, we can correct the default without giving notice to the private entity, and then give them written notice afterwards of what we've done.
So, under either the termination for convenience or termination for cause provisions, do we eliminate the ability of suppliers and subcontractors to come against the city?
We would have no contract with the subcontractors, their contract would solely be with the private entity until we took over or subsumed that contract. So, I, just as far as the school board's concerned, our relationship isn't directly with the subcontractors, it's with Gilbane, but I don't know, Ms. McCosker, if...
City attorney?
Generally, between the subcontractors and the school board, there's no privity of contract, and they would have no right to come to the school board.
And how about liability or injuries to workers?
That's another good question. There's paragraph... Article 11, you're saying page 45?
Yeah.
Yes, article 11 covers indemnity insurance and bonds. This talks about the limits of the insurance that Gilbane has to bring with it to the project, includes, very high levels of insurance, includes a lot of workers' comps, employer liability, business automobile insurance, contractor's pollution liability, commercial general liability insurance, aircraft liability. So, we did speak with V M L, who's our private insurer, to figure out what are the limits that they require schools to have, and we made sure that we wrote into the contract the maximum amount that V M L would, or the minimum amount that V M L would require, and it's my understanding that Gilbane, and even speaking with their architecture and engineering folks, are making sure right now that they have all of the insurance that's in place. So, I guess that gets back a little bit to your question of what if the subcontractors come after the school board or the city? I know that there's insurances in place and there are bonds that are in place that they would probably claim that against some of Gilbane's insurance, not directly against the city or the school.
There's also a specific indemnity against subcontractors and suppliers claims.
And has the city notified our own insurance carrier that this project is coming and whatever additional coverage we need? Or the school board?
I don't, I don't know whether the school board has, I don't believe that we have specifically, but we can certainly ensure that they're aware. I think they're aware.
Yeah, we did let our insurance company know that, there was a meeting today with one of our insurance brokers or reps, but also the language and the numbers that we put into the agreement were expressly given to us with the eye towards, this is what we want to, the private entity to have in place as we're building a new high school, so they're very aware of our project.
Okay, so finally, what are the warranties on the building, the construction, et cetera?
That, is that a good question? It's a one-year warranty, but I also know that there's written in here, a walkthrough at 11 months, as far as warranties on the geothermal, and we have, right, so we're going to have an independent testing company that comes and goes through the building as part of the lead certification process, to make sure that all the systems of the building are up and running. The warranty period for the building is one year, so there's a walkthrough scheduled 11 months to make sure that all things are working as they should be, and in the event there were any other concerns over the course of time, I think that's something that we would address through our insurance company. If there were a claim of a tile not working out well or something else, that'd be something that we'd work with our insurance company on.
Okay, so, just, this is my final question, I think these are all important issues to have on the record, so what if two or three years down the road, we find a construction defect? Not that that would ever happen, mind you, but then, you know, we've got metro stations with, you know, whatever, so...
Right, well, if it's discovered that it actually was a defect in the construction, I mean, we would look at whose, was there a responsibility of, well, it's design build, so we would likely be able to go back if it, it was something that didn't meet the contract terms, at that point, we could go back against Gilbane, because they were still responsible until the statute of limitations runs out for delivering under the contract.
Right, and so the one year, it doesn't seem like a very long period of time, is that customary for this sort of agreement?
It is, yes.
Okay, thanks, other questions ahead?
They're either one of the ends. Sure, go ahead, Mr. Z, and then we'll go to Mr. Lichtenhouse, then we'll go to Vice Mayor Connolly.
Seniority, go ahead. Well, you speak faster, so I'll come after you. Having been personally involved in terminations for default convenience, working with bonding companies to finish off projects, meeting our former friends in court, I thank Mr. Schneider for asking these questions, but this seems like pretty standard stuff to me, so I'm not going to spend any time on that. I'm going to be more optimistic and assume that we are actually under construction, and so there are provisions here, I presume, to handle things that no one wants to see, which are unforeseen inside conditions, so with regard to soils, one, and the other one would be interfaced with the existing school. What can you tell us about the assignment of responsibilities, mitigate, responsibilities for mitigation and resolution?
So, at page 23, paragraph 2.16 of the agreement, there's a discussion of hazardous materials, and I'll do soil question next, because I need to see where that is in the agreement, but for hazardous materials, as part of their proposal, they identified what they've called known materials, and what they will cover as part of, part of the work, any unknown hazardous materials would then have to come out of the owner's contingency, or have to be paid for separately through change orders, but as the known materials, things that have been considered is the asbestos reports from the AHRER reports that are taking place every three years, so there's some known asbestos that right now is, is not hazardous, is not causing any concerns, but once the building is demolished, or the tiles are moved, or parts of the layers of the roof are taken up, there is known asbestos, so that's included in the price, that's included in the work that is going to be done by the private entity. With regard to soils, we built into the R F D P and the R F P that the soils for the middle school, which is where the softball field is right now, might have, might have some settling, so we know that there need to be deep foundations, but as far as the current state of the soil and whether there's contamination there, or whether the soils are too dense to dispose of in a typical way, there is going to be testing that's taking place as part of the private entity's obligations, and they will test certain soils and see how that goes, and that will go into the pricing for the G M P, is my understanding. The thing that you can account for is if you test five different soil sampling, if their engineer says that's what you need to test, and then if they done a sixth one right in the middle, there's a soil condition that was unknown, but there are built-in steps where there will be testing of the current site, of the current ground, with the hopes that as part of the G M P, what's included is a known status of the soils, among other things. Does that answer your question?
Yes, what about the interface with the, with the middle school, for example?
There's builder's risk insurance? Thank you, Jennifer, so there's builder's risk insurance with regard to the interface with the middle school, and it's my understanding that that work is scheduled to be done when the middle school is, is not in session as much as possible, and certainly is scheduled around testing, so as not to interfere with S O Ls or other tests at the middle school and at the high school.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you. Trish, there's a cost savings sharing provision in this contract, correct? Can you just detail that for the record, please?
Yes, and hold on, my cheat sheet doesn't have that spelled out here, so that should be under, what's that?
6.2.
Thank you, 6.2. This is a team effort.
Just a contract walk back there for you.
Yeah. 6.2 substantial completion? I'm not seeing it there. Exhibit C? Sure, yeah, come on up.
I mean, if you guys just want to talk about it in somewhat general terms?
Sure, the general terms are...
If it's a 50/50 share?
No, it's 75/25, so any savings that, 25% of the savings would go to Gilbane, so they have an incentive to come at below cost, and 75% of that savings would go back to the school.
And that's everything under 108?
That's everything under the G M P, which won't be over 108, which is the construction cost limit. I do know that exhibit C, Mr. Stevens, what you were talking about, is there is an idea under the lead certification that if, if the, if Gilbane is able to get us to lead platinum, which is above the lead gold that we'd asked for, or is able to provide net zero energy, not just net zero ready, then that cost savings might be adjusted further to be more along the lines of 70/30, or 65/35, and, oh, thank you, whoever's controlling this knows what's going on, so shared savings is at 10.4 of the contract.
And it's capped.
It is capped at 500, yes.
Good, and the agreement that Gilbane made to deliver the school earlier?
Yes.
Than some of other respondents was not necessarily incentivized, it was just the fact that they're going to be more efficient in delivering that project, correct?
Right, and part of the explanation that they gave is that even though it's a really state-of-the-art building, it's very simple in terms of the steel goes straight up, and the building footprint is fairly simple to put up, and then when you put it around, or move the rooms around, that's where some of, once that we're enveloped in in December, the winter months, they can be working on that. But there is no, no incentive to finishing early, and there also are liquidated damages that part of moving the contract around from when you first saw it back in June to where it is now, was we don't want to penalize Gilbane if they can't reach that earlier schedule, but they're guaranteeing that they will stick with our schedule, which is the building done by June 2021, and all of the site stabilization done by November of 2021.
Okay, so on that, that was one of my questions. Okay. So, on that, that was one of my questions. On page 33, substantial completion is listed as July 23rd, so I assume, July 23rd, 2021, so I assume you left that in there, because that's our schedule, but not necessarily, doesn't comport with...
Sure.
The schedule that they've laid out.
If they get it done sooner, that's great, so there's no, no additional money for getting it done sooner, but also, if it takes longer, there's no additional cost on the schools for paying for, for more time of what that construction. So, the substantial completion schedule is based on what we'd asked for in the RFDP.
And can you remind me again, who pays for the moving cost of getting items from the old school to the new school? Is that on...
We do. That's a school cost.
Okay, right. And they can, do you guys have an estimate in terms of FFNE, the furniture, fixtures and equipment? Because I think it's important for folks to know that this contract we're talking about now does not deal with the computers, the desks, the chairs.
Right. The FFNE right now, it's my understanding, as we've set aside, about 3 million for that.
Okay.
And that's outside of the construction cost limit of 108 million.
Okay, great.
But it is included in that 120 million total.
Right, right, okay. And then on, on page 14, 2.8.6.1, you guys referenced the contingency amount. Maybe this is a question for Jennifer. What was the total contingency amount that you guys set aside?
The private entity contingency?
Yeah, the amounts aren't, so we are carrying two different types of contingencies. So, we have a construction contingency that is to address unforeseen conditions as we're in construction, and then we also have a separate contingency that is a design and escalation contingency. That one is 3.5%, and then I believe our construction contingency is 3%.
So, I was just looking at some of the timing, because there was some discussion in here about the number of draws that you can make out of that contingency, up to a maximum of $200,000 per month. Just thinking about the timeline of the project, let's say you were to max out your request for contingency, if your construction over a, I don't know, call it from start to finish, $200,000 per month over that time period, are we going to be, does that potentially force you guys out of the contingency where you may have to come back for, you know, inflation requests related to one thing or another?
So, it wasn't intended to be a failsafe. It's intended to more be that we can't just, like, $20,000 to death the contingency. So, any expenditures that we have need to get authorized before we spend them, but it doesn't limit the amount that's pulled out of the contingency.
And it also doesn't increase the, the amount of the GMP. Once the GMP's set, all that risk is on Gilbane.
Okay, great. Oh, and then just one additional clarification here, because I think, Carol, you mentioned this, the, the commercial, the commercial piece, the closing date for that, you said May 28, 2019? Is that what you...
That, that's the date that we're working with the developer on for our, right, to have a comprehensive agreement, to have the approval of the special exception entitlement.
So, we've got about a month and a half, two months, to get that negotiated before we're up against that $6.5 million commitment.
And we worked with Carol to, to figure out what would be the appropriate timing for that, and we wanted to give a little bit of wiggle room there, but recognizing that by February, March of this year, we should have a pretty good idea of how things are moving with the commercial development.
It's a narrow window. I think we'll...
It's a good thing we work closely and well together, yeah.
So, that's a good point. That was one of my last question, one of the last couple of questions. I know there's obviously going to be a lot of things moving very fast on your end with the schools and with Gilbane. We kind of control the money. You guys control the speed of the project. I did notice some of just, because when you get into the, to, the meat and potatoes of some of these and things start to get going, you kind of go by the formal schedule. There was no mention in here about, unless I missed it, about city staff or folks on council having access to the documents and the drawings. So, I think the folks, they don't want to be informed. I know that there are copies, both electronic and one full copy, three half-sized copies that are going. We have access to that on, on council, so we can kind of follow this?
Until that, yes.
Okay, great. I think that's important. So, if, when requests come up, we don't have to kind of scurry to get the documents and what we need to see, that it's, it's readily accessible.
Sure.
So, great. And then finally, maybe this is a question for, for, for staff. There's been a lot of conversation about that good neighbor strip of land between the commercial site and the school site, and I know that that'll be a bit of an ongoing discussion as to whether it becomes shared parking for the commercial and the school, if there's some amenity there for the commercial piece. I do think it's important for us to contemplate as early as possible, potentially parsing those out as separate tax parcels. If there are easements or there are separate parcels that need to be conveyed to the commercial site that are currently contiguous with the existing school site for both taxability purposes, mainly taxability purposes, that we contemplate that as early as possible. And I know that that's kind of a big question, that we have to get into the finer points, but, you know, we are looking to generate as much money as possible off of this commercial site. So, if there is a portion that's contained within this school site that will be carved out for commercial purposes, shared or otherwise, that should be fully taxable, at least to the extent that the commercial component is utilizing that. And so, we want to make sure that we parse that out as, as soon as possible to be able to capture the value of that from a taxable standpoint.
All right. Other questions? Ms. Hardy?
Two more things I just reminded of. We talked about the timing of the project. Obviously, it sounds like things are accelerating, given that Gilbane can finish six months earlier, which is great. The GMP also sounds like it's going to be several months earlier than the original timeline.
Yes, I think we'd initially thought it would be in the March-April timeframe, and now we're thinking December, more likely January or February.
Yeah. Are, besides kind of shortening, obviously, the community input period between now and October, are there other pros and cons with kind of having an earlier GMP set?
I think it's less, we'd already contemplated that we would have those discussions in, on August 5, and then two or three in September, and the last one in mid-October. So, I don't think that this is compressing the community discussions. I think it's compressing the amount of time that they have to work on the design. So, we want to make sure that we're meeting. I know we have our kickoff meeting set with Gilbane next week, so we want to give, we haven't had a chance yet to give the schools feedback on, we see your design, here are our questions, here are things that we were thinking that we didn't, you didn't know we were thinking. So, I don't think it's shortening, shortening or decreasing the amount of community input, but it really is making sure that that design is done quickly, and we give feedback on that and get community feedback on that, and they have, they're able to turn it around quickly so that we could be at a point on the contract or on the design documents to then enter into the GMP discussions and to hold those negotiations once we know what the design is. But we're feeling really confident with the design and really excited about the community input and the meetings that are scheduled, and certainly welcome you all to, to join those committees and be part of those.
Great. So, go to PSA for everyone paying attention, especially in the summer when people are tuned out to attend these meetings at the end of the summer and early fall.
Sure, sure.
Last question. Obviously, we've got some really competent in-house attorneys, but who else has reviewed this? Because only some of us are attorneys up here.
Yes, and I am not a construction attorney. So, William Devan is, is an outside construction counsel. I know he's helped with the city with some things in the past. He helped us with getting the Mount Daniel project, making sure we're able to move forward successfully on that. He's been a construction counsel for, normally, he's on the other side of the private entity, so he kind of knew some of the failsafes and knew some language that we wanted to build in. He was great with negotiating, both with Briceford and Dunleavy, our owner's rep, and with Gilbane, and he has 30 years' experience on me, so I was really grateful for his, his time. And to the extent that I haven't explained anything or you have other questions about this, I'm also happy to get him back involved and to answer those questions. But I'm grateful he kind of took me under his wing and taught me a lot of what this meant, and I have a lot of confidence in his abilities and what he's done to, to help us get to this point.
Great. Well, thank you for your patience with answering all of our questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know William as well. He's a good, he's a very competent lawyer, so I think we're in good hands.
Mm-hmm.
I've just got a comment or question or two. So, we did discuss this. I appreciate your, your comments about working with the neighboring property owners and like, just wondering how it's treated in the scope of work. I, I have this feeling that we're going to get into this, and people will say, and another thing, you know, with respect to Womata coming late to the party, or UVA, or somebody else wanting to kind of keep playing with that, maybe the, the road in front of it, or how this interacts or interfaces with the commercial property, whether it's, you know, how does traffic circulate or, or things like that. Is there a set amount of hours, you know, sort of devoted to this, or how does it work in the scope of work?
I don't think there's a set of amount of time of either Gilbane or Briceford and Dunleavy, but I know the sooner we begin those discussions and start figuring out what are those issues that we want to make sure we want, run to ground, the better it's going to be for all of us. It can be part of the initial design and won't require a design phase and won't require any change orders. So, I think between now and, and the mid-October timeframe is when we want to be getting that input and soliciting folks from, from the university site and from Womata to join in the conversation, share what their needs are and what their plans are, so that we can work together, and that can be incorporated, and what the, the design is that goes forward to GMP, rather than waiting until, I know Jennifer did say the, the demolition of the high school wouldn't take place until the fall of 2021, or the spring of 2021, so that could be some of the time. But as far as permitting and design, we want to make sure that we're out of, in front of that. So, the sooner it can be done, the easier that can be incorporated into the GMP without change orders, and the easier it can be part of the initial design, rather than going back and, and redesigning or changing features.
Gotcha. I think we're talking time, two different things. One is, you know, when does something happen? The other one is, how much does it, how much time does it take to have those interfaces? And so, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do think that there will be a need for some substantial discussions, obviously with our community, but also with our neighbors, to make sure we get this right all the way around. But I appreciate your willingness to engage in those conversations. I think that's all I've got. Is there anyone else who's got any questions?
This is, just to be obvious, in compliance with the original agreement, that commercial development on this property may not exceed 10 acres. Is that right, the original water sale agreement?
It's my understanding that 10 acres of the site is going to be for the commercial development. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions, we thank you for all of your hard work and your beautiful design. And so, I think we'll probably be entertaining a motion shortly, and I'm going to ask for a public comment, to see if there is any tonight. Does anyone want to make a motion at this point?
I move to adopt TR 18-37.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, any member of the public? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Before we take a vote, does anyone have any comments or anything further they'd like to say? Vice Mayor Connolly, yes, indeed.
I save my comments till now. And first, I want to say that I am so grateful to the contract nerds of the world for working all that out, because that is not my area of expertise. But my area of expertise is looking at the big picture about how we got here. So, what I want to say right now is just, thank you to everyone who got us here. 364 days ago was July 24, 2017, and that is when the city council voted to put this on the ballot for a referendum. So, in the past year, we have come so far. So many people have been involved, different people along the way. A year before that, in 2016, we were in a bit of disarray, and we didn't even know how we were going to go forward. There were so many questions, so many good questions, that everyone had, the contract nerds had questions, and the history nerds had questions, and we didn't even know if we really needed to build a new school, and maybe we could renovate. So, so in the two years since then, we have come so far. And I was so happy to hear you say that July 23, 2021, is the end of the contract. So, it's going to be my new favorite day of the year, July 23, July 24. I've started to really look at this process kind of like a zipper. Each thing has to go into place at the right time and the right spot, and you have brought us there. So, every single person has had a little piece of closing up this zipper, and it's going to keep happening, because we know that on August 22 is when the RFDP is due from the commercial development. And then we know that that decision will be made in the fall, and that's all going to fit together really nicely. And as we talk about the things that could be the stick in the zipper, there may be some sticks along the way, but I'm really confident that as we have put so many smart people and dedicated people, community members, and elected officials and staff to look at this project together, that that's going to be a nice, smooth zipper pull up till we get our project completed. So, thank you all, and it's been a lot of work. And again, thank you to the contract nerds especially.
All right. Is there anything else that needs to be said? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I would certainly second what the vice mayor said. It's, I've lived with this for quite a while, and so I'm glad we're where we are today, but I, I, I have to say that we have some critical decisions ahead, and I hope the development community realizes that we expect a lot, and if we don't get it, we may not go forward with this project. And I think that's absolutely fundamental, which is why a lot of my questions went to what if that happens. Quick question. Both the city manager and city attorney have signed off on that, so am I correct that you both believe we should go forward with this contract as written?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I, really, it's an exciting point, but we've got a few critical steps to go through here, so we'll see how we do, but I'm hopeful. That's really the only comment. I really don't have anything else to add at this point.
All right. Well, listen, our thanks again for all the great work and hard work that's gone into this, and we know there's miles to go before we sleep, so a lot ahead of us, but this presented a beautiful design, and we look forward to moving forward. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Quick question. Where do we sign up for the subcommittees?
Online. Here, on the campus website, online, there's a, a link describing where we are now. It gives the dates of the meetings, and there's a sub-link where you can sign up for the committees, and it lists, I think, the seven, six different categories that you can, you can designate which ones you're most interested in serving on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we could ask the clerk to, get it to the clerk, and she could share it with council.
All right, thank you very much.